Okay. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Mr. LaCourte?
Here.
Ms. MacGyver?
Here.
Mr. Mettler?
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Hatt?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Potasnek?
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Chairman Ursini?
Here.
Okay, so first item of business is the minutes from July the 16th. If there's no comments or corrections...
If there's no discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a large number of resolutions.
We have one more member present.
Ah, yes.
Oh.
Please note that Mr. Mettler and Mr. O'Nyaka arrived. So the first resolution is DeGeorge, PLN 14-0000.
And Bob Seuss.
Another member.
And Mr. Thomas. You note they all arrived at 7:35.
If there's no discussion, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We're doing the DeGeorge. Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll stand if I didn't hear him.
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Second one is Doshy, 14-00005.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mettler?
Whoa, 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 wait, wait. I don't know that you can move it because you voted against it.
Oh, all right.
I'll move it.
Okay.
And who was the second?
Bob?
Okay.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And me?
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Okay, Somerset Volunteer First Aid Squad, 14-00008.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Okay, Somerset Volunteer Fire and Rescue, 14-00007.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
And the last one, Fusion on Ice, 14-00003. And FYI, votes not in favor of this were Carl and Jim, so don't motion or second.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Okay. So vouchers, so can we do... Remind me again, Vince, can we do these all at once?
Yeah.
And but we do have a vote. We don't do it by acclamation. So August and September retainers, they add up to $1,666. County of Somerset, $60. That's for work on that application. For the Somerset Volunteer Rescue application, $60. And for Doshy, 48750. So we can approve all of those vouchers at once, but let's do it again.
Okay, I'll move to approve all of four of them.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. O'Nyaka?
Yes.
Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Now we have a GDP, General Development Plan Amendment, for Summerfields. And you want... No, I think it's... I know what this is, but it's very simple.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application to amend a resolution of approval and the general development plan for the project known as Summerfields. Very briefly, in 2005, this board approved the original Summerfields application, and the original Summerfields application consisted of 150 market rate, single-family residential dwelling units, and 750 age-restricted units. Thereafter, in 2009, the New Jersey State Legislature enacted the conversion bill, which allowed the conversion of the age-restricted to market rate units. At that time, we applied for the conversion, and an approval was granted to convert the affordable units to market rate units.
Age-restricted.
I'm sorry.
Age-restricted.
Age-restricted to market rate. As part of the conversion, we were required to provide 20% of the units as affordable housing. When we started to do the documents, some were... And actually, it started in the general development plan document, and thereafter, what got carried through the documents, that 900 units were being converted, and when in reality, there were only 750 units that were in fact being converted, because 150 units were originally market rate units and therefore did not need to be converted. So what we are now doing is asking to amend those documents to reflect what was actually done by the board back in 2009. The reason we're doing it, and we've had discussions with the manager and Mr. Healy, it would change the number of affordable housing units that we would have to build within the project, but it does not change our obligation toward affordable housing in Franklin. With respect to market rate units, we are required to pay 1% of the assessed value of those units into a fund to the municipality. So what should have been done is the 150 units that were originally market rate should have been assessed the 1%. They were not. They were counted toward constructing the affordable housing units. So what we are looking to do is correct everything. We will then have to amend the developers' agreements that we have with the governing body. We will then be cutting a check to the governing body to cover the 150 single-family residential units, and we will still be building the affordable housing units based on the 750 number. In a nutshell, that's what we're seeking to do, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
So to put it simply, or to summarize it, basically, 150 single-family detached units that are to the, I guess, to the west of the property, were always single-family, non-age-restricted.
That is correct.
From the very beginning, when the rest was age-restricted, and when the conversion happened, they remained non-age-restricted. They never actually converted.
Right.
So technically, the 20%, what you're saying is the 20% affordable should have been based on the 750.
Right.
Not the full 900. And then, in that case, when if the 750 or if the 150 aren't being included in the affordable, you know, the tally of the number of units, then you have to pay per ordinance the 1% of the equalized assessed value.
That is correct.
So in effect, what would happen is instead of 180 affordable units resulting from the development, it would be 150, and then they would again have to pay the 1%, which just to correct Mr. Lanford, the check would not be made out to the Township Council. The check goes to our Affordable Housing Trust Fund for affordable housing activities.
And just to clarify, it was clear in the old... In the original resolution, that 750 units were converted, but the GDP basically said that there were going to be 180 affordable, so there were disconnects in the documents. And basically, that's what we're trying to...
It's probably my fault.
No, I don't think it was your fault. And it was, you know, everybody just took the 900 and did all the math on the 900. So we need to correct it and make it the way it should be.
So do we need a movement, a motion, and a...
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I...
I just want to ask, because I think I know the answer, but it's not clear in the documents. The 150 affordable units that you will still be building, down from 180, does that include the 50 affordable senior apartments?
It does, and actually, one of the buildings is currently under construction. They're being built as we speak. Yeah.
And the other thing as well, that we'll be working with them on, is there's also a commitment to provide 24 very low units, and they've not proposed to change that. And I would suggest that that also remains, since that's an obligation that we continue to have.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we agree to that these changes are in order and will approve amended documents.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Potasnek? Chairman Ursini?
Yes.
Okay, so the final item on the discussion is the Minor Subdivision Committee met earlier tonight to discuss an application from Warren Capital for a subdivision on Garfield, right before Garfield passes over 287. And even though it's an R-10 zoning lot, the subdivision lots are going to be 20,000 square feet for one and 37,000 square feet for the other. There are no variances. Part of the reason for that is that they're going to be served by both Septic and Well. The applicant represented by Peter agreed to all the comments, which were very minor: street trees, doing a tree survey for the property, other minor, very minor comments such as...
Paying into the sidewalk.
Paying into the sidewalk fund, because there's no sidewalks there. And so, no variances. So the Minor Subdivision Committee was unanimous in their approval of that.
Is the Garfield north of 287 or south?
North.
North, okay.
Yeah.
So we're good.
So you need...
Don't need to do anything. You guys already voted it's approved. So they just give a report to the board so they know that you... What you did.
Okay. So we really only have one hearing tonight, but the first hearing requires some explanation. So it's Michael and Gail Giannato, Relief of Conditions. And this is a fairly long story that I'll try to make short, maybe with some assistance from Vince or Mark in terms of the particulars. But this was an application on Buffa Drive, which was approved a number of years ago. And I know some of you will remember this. Of an old farmhouse. It's R-40, but the neighborhood's developed as R-20. And the applicant had done some extensive work to preserve or dismantle and preserve the farmhouse, because it was sort of historic, had some historical report, et cetera. We approved the R-20 for two houses, or to keep the farmhouse on one lot and to keep the...
Oh, he wound up...
Wound up taking apart the farmhouse.
Right, right.
But anyway, two lots, both 20,000 square feet, in character with the neighborhood, and it was an uncontroversial application. The applicant never filed the deeds. So that property doesn't really exist. And now, the complicating factor is that one of those houses, I think, has been built.
Correct.
Correct. And it has 22% impervious coverage, which for an R-40 lot would not be a problem. Problem is, it's an R-20 lot. So it's 2% over, 20%. Instead of 20%, it's 22%. And that's the way the condition is right now. So to be able to go through the process of getting a variance for this and all of that, it was discovered that the deeds had never been filed. So what we need to do is to approve, which the applicant's entitled to, an extension of time for that. They also need to actually come back and talk to us about the variance, et cetera.
Yes, what we're going to carry...
We're going to carry it.
What will be carried, the relief of condition will be carried, because what they need to do is, when they came, they were... Mr. Giannato built the one house he's in. They were required by the resolution to build pretty much exactly the same or close to the same house. Well, they're going to propose a smaller house, which I believe the people in the neighborhood would be... Would like, and we don't have any issue. But Mark and I don't have the ability to approve that, even though we don't have an issue with it, because you guys had a condition, it had to be the same house. So he noticed for the relief of condition. We have to carry that matter. He has to notice for the variance. And so at a subsequent meeting, he'll come and do everything all at once. He'll get the relief of conditions, the variance, and the extension so he can file the deeds. We hope to, at that meeting, have the resolution, have the deeds, so we can clean it up. The chairman can sign it, and the next day, he can file the deeds, and everything will be fine.
And just one clarification as well, that the subdivision approval is still valid by the Permit Extension Act.
Right.
It was the time that they had to file the deed that needs to be extended, just so the board is clear.
So we need to approve that extension of time, correct?
No. Alls you're doing now is carrying it.
Carrying it. And so that leads to when we want to carry it. So if it was done, the first meeting of October, it would be our only agenda item. But we have a number of other agenda items for October 15th. So I made the decision that we'll just carry it to October 15th. We're not going to come in for a special meeting. I believe the phrase is, you know, "value to properly plan on your part..."
So you're going to carry it to October 15 without any further... For the public, October 15 without any further notice then?
Yep. So if everybody's good with that?
That's fine.
Do you need a motion?
Excuse me?
Do you need a motion?
No.
No, no, that's... It's just the chairman's made the decision, and we're not going to have a meeting in October 1st.
Okay.
So that's his decision to make, so.
So with that, our only application of the night thereafter is Canal Walk LLC, PLN And this should also be, I think, from what I understand, pretty straightforward. Unless you want to notice 1,000.
No, this should be very straightforward. I guess I'm going to spend a couple minutes just to go through history, because quite frankly, this Phase Two of this is coming next month, so I might as well sort of set the table. First of all, for the record, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant Canal Walk. In the late 1990s, the Franklin Hatchet created the Senior Citizen Village District, and the Canal Walk project started. It was a site of 300 and some acres. And we received in the early... In the late 1990s, a GDP approval and a preliminary subdivision approval. And the way the project was built, it was built in sections. And every time we were ready to build a section, we came in here for a final for that section. And if they were for-sale units, we'd also, you know, get a preliminary and final for all of those lots as we went through the project. So we started off with a 300-acre lot. We took a section out, it became 200 and some acres. We took another section out, it became 200 acres, and on down. Why we are here tonight is to get final approval for Section 11. Section 11 of the project are the two lots to either side of the main entrance to Canal Walk. These lots have not been developed, obviously. This application tonight is just to create the lots. And that's why we are here tonight, to create the two lots. Next month, we will be here for a subdivision approval for one of those two lots. I'll sort of give you a precursor. As the board may recall, somewhere in the mid-2000s, part of this project had entailed a commercial component at the intersection of Schoolhouse and Mettler's. We came in with a plan. The plan was approved. The commercial was never built. Subsequent to that, all of the commercial was developed along Elizabeth Avenue. This developer felt that to develop additional commercial there would not be productive. As a matter of fact, as you are aware, and we talked about Summerfields earlier, Summerfields has a commercial component on the other corner, which is in fact going to be developed. Plans are being drawn now, and you'll be seeing them fairly shortly. So what we're going to be doing next month is basically eliminating that commercial approval and coming in for residential, single-family units on that lot. But we are here tonight merely to create the overall lot upon which those single-family units will be proposed next month. The lot that we are creating will merge with Lot 1, and as you're looking at the site, it would be to the left of the entrance. There is also another lot to the right of the entrance, and all we're doing is creating that lot. At this time, we have no development plans for that lot. That would be the last undeveloped piece within the project. Ultimately, something will be developed there, but that hasn't been decided yet. So we're seeking to create those two lots. They are a total of 21 acres in size. We will file the final maps, and like I said, we will be here next month for the subdivision, further subdivision of those lots. That's why we're here.
If the board looks on Page 3 of my report, Figure 2, well, when it's provided in color, it's a nice map. I guess this is what it would look like at midnight. But it does show the two lots pretty clearly, with Lot 2 being to the left of Canal Walk Boulevard. That's the 9.63-acre parcel. And the one to the right, Lot 3, that's the 19.26-acre parcel. And that's the parcel that Mr. Lanford was just talking about, that will be the subject of the future subdivision. It's basically just creating those two big lots.
That's correct.
Does the board have any other questions regarding that?
Yes. On the final map of Phase 11, I don't notice any recreational areas or clubhouses or anything of that nature.
Well, they're already in other sections. The clubhouse was actually built as one of the earlier parts of the project, and it is in Phase 9.
No, I know you have them across the road. You're not going to have anything for...
No, they have a good amount in Canal Walk. And actually, what... No developments proposed for this development, so they... For this, you know, actual application, but for the next development that you're going to see next month, they have to provide an amended subdivision plan, and also an amended general development plan approval, which is going to have to demonstrate that they still comply. The zone has particular requirements in terms of the amount of open space, the amount of recreation it provides, the amount of clubhouse space, et cetera. All of those requirements will be reviewed in the upcoming application.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I just delivered those documents this evening. Just again, to refresh some of your recollections, I don't know who was here. I know, I think Dr. Chase was here when this started. But there was a density requirement of 4.3 units per acre that we were allowed as part of this project. All of the recreation and open space was based on those densities. The adding of these new units will still be under the 4.3. In other words, we could not get 4.3 on what was already developed, so we will still be under the density that we were allowed for this project.
But there will be nothing on this side of the street?
Well, the clubhouse is a stone's throw from where we're constructing these new units.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're not approving the new units tonight, just to make it clear.
No, I know. I realize this isn't a site plan.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that there will be things available nearby.
They will be part of the community. They will be members of the association. They will have full access. Actually, the site has two clubhouses, two swimming pools, outdoor and indoor swimming pool, tennis courts, bocce courts. And just like every member, I dare say probably some of the people that live closer to Western Canal Road are further away from the main clubhouse than these units. These units are fairly close to the main clubhouse.
In fact, wasn't the overall percentage of like open space and recreation together for the project something like 30% or something like that? I recall something fairly high for...
I don't remember what the percentage. I don't have it here.
Maybe it was over 30%.
Of the 300 acres, 108 acres consist of, well, of either recreation, open space, and actually, the roads are included in that. But basically, a third of the project was open space, roads, or recreation. And that will be the... And that number doesn't change. It's still going to be 108 acres of remained land that will be owned by the association when this project is developed.
And again, the next application, we'll be looking at that in detail, to make sure they still comply.
Okay. And Ed?
I just have a question, because it came up earlier, as far as the age restriction and that being lifted.
Not in this project.
No.
Well, not in this... Well, it's like the precursor to...
Not here.
That wouldn't happen.
No.
Except it's putting a strain on the schools.
No, no. These units will be age-restricted. They will be absorbed into the already age-restricted community, and it will be all 55 and over.
And no chance that'll be lifted?
Zero.
Magic ones?
Zero.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, Summerfields was listed... Lifted the way the state law was constructed. If there was already a project where by contract it was age-restricted and there were people living there, then that remained age-restricted. With Summerfields, it had not yet begun to be built. It only had approval. So that, in that instance, the state legislature, and I wouldn't say its wisdom, but it, with exercising its power, decided that as long as there were not contracts in existence, that could be changed over.
There's no shovel in the ground?
No shovel in the ground, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I've been trying to figure out what the lot to the west of Canal Walk Boulevard, what is that subdivided from? The other side of the brook, Lot 1, Block 513.44?
It is subdivided from the original mother lot of the entire project. And I believe that is the lot number. So Lot 1, yeah, it's being subdivided from Lot 1, Block 513.44.
And then what's to the east of Canal Walk Boulevard is actually a reverse subdivision of two lots being merged into one?
No, it is actually a subdivision, again, from Lot 513.44 of 6 acres, and then that lot that is being created will be merged into Lot 1.
Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's technical. It's all it is. So any other questions? So we do have to open to the public.
One question?
Oh, yeah, call.
Is it Section 9 or 11? Because one sheet says Section 11. One sheet, Sheet 3, says Section 9.
If it says Section 9, it's an error. It will be corrected. It is Section 11. We've already filed Section 10. I don't think we can go back.
Yeah, you don't have to open it. It's a final, so there's no...
Oh, we don't have to open it? I'm sure we wouldn't have any comments in support of one.
Well, Anatole wants to comment, but we're not going to let him.
All right, but then in that case, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the application for subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Ms. La Court.
Yes.
Ms. McGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Potasnek.